And I'd like to call the regular meeting of Athabasca County Council for April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to order. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. The items uh so far listed that we need to discuss. Two point one. All of item four, that's four point one, four point two, four point three. Six point one, six point two. Seven point three, seven point five. Number eight point two. Uh, Councillor Holland has pointed out a correction under number ten, all the sub numbers should be corrected to read ten point something and there on the agenda they're listed. Sub numbers are listed as elevens. And then number eleven point one. Are there any further items to add or take away? Councillor Holland, your mic's on.
Thank you, um, I'd like to add seven point four, please, as well as eleven point one, please.
Sorry, eleven.
Or ten point one, I guess, correction, ten point one.
Ten point one, which.
Yeah, thank you.
So under reports, the uh, the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee, item letter G. Other items, Councillor Anderson?
I would like to add. Ten point one Z Regional Emergency Advisory Committee, please.
Ten point one Z Regional Emergency Advisory Committee. Hey, I'll go through the list again. It's pretty short agenda, it's hard to add too much, I suppose. Two point one, four point one, four point two, six point one, six point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five. Eight point two. Corrected ten point one G, the Trail Steering Committee. And ten point one Z, the Regional Emergency Advisory Committee, and eleven point one closed session item. For all for all of number four has to be on Councillor delegation, so yes, yeah. Councillor Holland, are you moving the adoption of the agenda? Councillor Holland has moved the adoption of the agenda. And the. Passing of the recommendations on those other motions. On the question, the discussion of the agenda. All those in favor? Opposed, the vote is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Uh, we'll skip. Number four for now, because they're all scheduled for. Later in the meeting. Uh, turning to page thirty six in your agenda. Administration has made a recommendation on lot consolidation by law, is anyone willing to move first reading? Councillor. Uh, Chamsik has moved first reading of bylaw zero zero six two zero two four, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of first reading of zero zero six two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed. The count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted, Councillor Cromwell, were you willing to move second reading? Councillor Cromwell has moved second reading of zero zero six two zero two four. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to move second reading of zero zero six two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed. The count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Moving on to item six point two. Bylaw zero zero seven two zero two four. Repeal of inoperative obsolete expired spent and ineffective bylaws. Like to, is there anyone willing to move first reading of that bylaw? Councillor. Minz has moved first reading of uh, zero zero seven two zero two four. Is there any discussion? Councillor Gerlock.
So once these are rescinded, they're. They still stay as as a historic record, do they, or? Or do they just get sort of?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we'll keep them in records, but. We'll remove them from the county website because I think it's going to cause confusion. Are they in existence or are they in effect or not? So they'll absolutely be kept in records.
Yeah, good, because they seem to have historic value.
Yep, his historic value, right.
I wanted to compliment the CIO and their team on the continuing efforts to clean up these legacy issues and and uh. Deal with that just as. As as part of our goal to be a better governed, better managed organization, so. If there's no other comments on the question of the adoption of the motion to move first reading of zero zero seven two zero two four, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and first reading is adopted. Is there someone willing to move second reading, Councillor Gerlock has moved second reading of zero zero seven two zero two four, once again, open for discussion? Seeing none, nobody wants to debate whether we should keep the Manuk hours of closing available or. Retail hours in the Hamlet of Boyle?
Oh, 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 it is, it's nice, it's actually. Great historical value to see how much these graders were worth back.
Can you buy the tires for that today?
Compared to the graders nowadays, it's like, oh, my lord, it's great.
And interesting that they had to pay for them in installments. On the question of the adoption of the motion to move second reading of zero zero seven two zero two four, all those in favor? And opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. The next one is seven point. Three, mowing at Saint Thomas's Churchyard. Is there anyone willing to move our motion? Councillor Chamsik. Yes. Okay, Councillor Chamsik has moved the recommended motion to receive for information, is there any discussion? I I I mean, I guess I would like to add that I uh, I'm opposed to that motion because I feel like it's inconsistent to deny the request of an organization when. We also help out and mow other. Small country churchyards, um, in addition to those with cemeteries, there are those that have no cemetery and we send mowers out, so. Unless we're willing to be consistent and say no to everybody or yes to the people who ask, I think we, I would recommend. We reject this and continue and and accept their request. The county currently mows twenty five cemeteries that we do not own. And of which contain churches. And in this particular one, when I looked at it last night on the um. The GIS, it's about point four of an acre worth of open space. But it is unfortunately separated by. A bit of uh frostboiled road between there and the. The playground, although the last time I was on that playground, I'm not sure if we actually do maintain it because I pulled trees out of the sand that are now growing in my yard and. So. On that one, I'm going to speak opposed to just accepting for information. Further discussion, Councillor Gerler, the floor is yours.
Yes, I. That was why I had hesitancy in opposing this. Initially, because I think we do need further. Discussion. About. Getting a level of consistency in dealing with these things, it's early in the year. We've, you know, mowing isn't going to start for months too. So I think we. We need to. Visit this because it is hit and miss and we need to get something that's consistent. Something that serves the communities, because communities are changing, a lot of the. A lot of the. People that are still in the community are are becoming seniors and it's very difficult for them to to do these things and. Some of the newer people in the community aren't prepared to step up and and take these responsibilities. So it's it's changed demographic and I think we need to give it some attention.
Councillor Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you, um, to go ahead with um. This particular mowing around the church, are we going to be looking at doing an agreement or hold harmless or how is that going to um?
Maybe the director could answer what we do with the other twenty five churches we look after.
Thank you, through the chair to Councillor Holland, uh, we are working to create agreements with all of the places we are currently uh, mowing. Uh, so if council directs that we start mowing this as well, then yes, we will be putting an agreement in place with them.
Thank you.
Councillor Minz, floor is yours.
I remember. Back at a meeting before, we we did a long, long discussion about mowing and and mowing cemeteries and mowing. Uh, churches and stuff like that and and. This is just another reason to. To get this moving forward with a new with a new plan. Getting a getting a a grant system or. I know right now, if if we go through a. Like like we're not doing, we're not doing. Uh, a good job on on mowing. All these areas now and we just keep adding on and and it's not fair for administration, it's not fair for. For uh. The people that we're doing, the entities that we're doing the mowing for because. Because uh. I think we could do a better job, so we we really need to discuss this and try to figure out, are we going to be bringing on more people to? To enhance this. Again, back in twenty nineteen. We got. We we kept doing the same amount of uh. Cemeteries and and the mowing program was the same and we and. Due to COVID, we. We shut down a crew. And after COVID, we never brought a crew back on. But we kept accept accepting more and more mowing program, so it's like. What are we doing here? Me, you know, if we accept this one, which which? Fine, but we need to come up with a better system. We need to come up with a better system to to mow these, to mow these areas if we're going to do that. So. Are 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 we coming? I guess I can't remember, are we coming forward with a new system or what's what's happening?
I'm going to ask Director Reilly to remind us because I was a little, there was a long discussion and I I also was. Where did we leave that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Councillor Minz, uh, I have been directed to bring back to your next committee of the whole meeting, a uh, recommendation for how to move forward with a mowing program for. Uh, the twenty twenty five summer, uh, and uh, I have been. Requested to bring back extra persons and machinery which will be presented to you for final budget deliberations to uh, meet the standards of expectation, you said at about three weeks. Mowing rotation uh, for this year.
Yeah, Councillor Minz, the floor remains yours.
So could we possibly? I guess, we got a motion on the floor right now. So. Could we uh? Amend the motion or something like that, maybe just table it until till we have that. Further discussion? On?
Um, so tabling is certainly possible um, to kick it forward. The decision, as the director has said, affects the next season's mowing, so if you think there's value in. Not making a decision until we know what we're doing next year, that's tabling's an answer, I I might as propose that you hold back on that just to give Councillor Cromwell a chance to speak because he's on.
Okay.
Because once we enable it, the discussion ceases.
No, no, I don't want to, I don't want to stop the discussion because we do have time to have it.
We probably have some time, so. Uh, Councillor Cromwell.
I completely agree with the Reeve today and. That we have to do things adequately, we have to do it fair.
Right, yeah, I was going to write that down in my calendar, Councillor. It's happening a lot lately, so.
It's unnerving. But i- in all reality, though. I think that we need to defeat the motion on the table. Put in the motion to approve this, do. What we're doing for. A lot of the other areas of our community, a lot of other organizations, let administration do their work. And if we have to reinvent the program for twenty twenty five, we'll do with that during the winter time. Let's get this added to the list. Get them taken care of. And allow administration to bring back what they need to bring back, but it is not fair to. To this organization to go, we're going to do. Thirty nine others, but we're not going to do you. And. I am definitely prepared to make a motion to. Accept their request if we defeat the motion on the floor.
Councillor, uh, Chamsik, you get the final word, but um, I'll just, anybody who hasn't spoken that wants to speak. There's might be a couple that want to hit it a second time, is there any objection to suspend the rules to go one more time or give anybody else a second chance? Seeing no objections, I'll assume unanimous consent. Um, Councillor Chamsik, you still get final word, but the floor is yours now.
Yeah, no, I just want to say it's a great uh, motion to create a good discussion about this, I think generally. All of us and all of our colleagues have uh. A same vision in mind and uh. I'm happy to have the discussion and looking forward to the twenty twenty five year.
I, and again, I. I'll go a second time and say. I'm not necessarily in favor of us mowing every cemetery that's owned by existing organizations and every churchyard and all of that, I just think we need to be consistent across them and. You know, on the master list that administration has provided, there's a number of those organizations that are, let's say, still in business and and some that aren't. And I think we got to figure that out, and so for me. I. This is. About consistency across the what we're doing, um, but. If we have a plan that eliminates doing it all together and it's universal. I'm certainly interested in hearing that too, but um. I look forward to. Admin's plan, but in this case, again, I would speak in favor of. Consistency, because we're doing the same order again.
Yeah, I just want to point out. This is not a a new request, this was a request that was a couple of years ago. And it was approved and it has been mowed for the last couple of years by the county. And and I think there was a rumor this year that we were going to dispense doing it.
I think we stopped, I think the the original motion just as a correction was uh, for one year only, and so I I don't. Oh, know that the county did it last year, the director would have to clarify. But well, somebody sure did a nice job last year. I I think it, I think they are getting fairly old, is what I understand. Anybody else? Councillor Holland? Usually you'd like two chances, so I should.
Thanks, no, I'm I'm just, I'm thinking we're going to be defeating the original motion and and bringing up a new one, so I'll wait for that.
Okay, Councillor. Chamsik, any final words? On the question of the motion to uh, accept, to receive this report for information, all those in favor? Opposed. The count is six. Sorry, the count is two and six and the motion is defeated. Uh, Councillor. Cromwell has indicated a willingness to make a motion, Councillor Cromwell, the floor is yours.
To direct administration to approve the mowing request for the Saint Thomas Churchyard.
The Councillor Cromwell has made a motion to direct administration to approve the request from the Saint Thomas Church for mowing of their churchyard, some language like that. Further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion to approve the request from Saint Thomas's to mow their churchyard for this. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed. The count is seven and one and the motion is adopted. Seven point four, uh, Trail Trails Association, Councillor Holland, you added that to the agenda.
Yes, thank you, um, I was just curious, um.
Do you have a motion you'd like to make or?
It's going to come from a discussion. Because.
So, is is table okay with having a conversation before the motion? Let's get a motion first and then we'll. Um, sorry, there's an objection, so you still have the option to make the motion or a different one.
Okay, um, I'm not going to make the recommended motion because the um, trail group has not asked for labor. Um, so I will make. Without having this discussion, I'll throw it out there, to approve a donation of. Three loads of elimination gravel. To be dropped off. At a location that can be spread by the Athabasca Recreational Trails Association uh, between Collington and six five four.
We say to uh.
Entrance.
To approve a donation of three loads of elimination to be dropped off at an agreeable location with the Trails Association.
Correct.
Yeah, you want to speak to that or now you want to grill admin with?
Um, the reason why is um. In the conversation that had taken place when we had the delegation, um, there is some degrading of the trail. Caused by the detour um, that people have chosen to take, it's not a legal detour, but people are using it as a detour for that bridge that's out. And so because of that, there the work that was done to build that trail in twenty fourteen, there's matting that's been put down, et cetera, et cetera, and because of the vehicle. Usage that those certain areas are being impacted, um, and it is a very expensive fix. Um, if we don't get on top of it now, and so the elimination um, that they're looking for, of course, would be excellent material to be able to. Place in there, fix those particular areas, they've got the equipment to spread that that gravel on the trail. Um, in the areas that are needed before the bridge, it's about one point three kilometers in from the trailhead. Those areas that the bridge is being impacted before and after the bridge and a couple of areas that the fabric is showing through. Um, so they're able to go in and do that with the small equipment that they have, they just need to have some material there, so they're just looking for that donation of of rejects rather than. A full day's labor, um, I think it was mentioned sixteen hundred dollars here for a day labor, that's not what they were looking for, but I don't know what. The labor, what the cost would be for. Three loads of gravel to be delivered there, now if they have to pick it up, which is another um, option, it would just be some that we, the. Uh, association will be looking at having to pay someone to to do the pickup of that, so there's other options that are that are out there. That can be used, um, it's just looking for that material. Um, is the most important thing right now. And of course, it can't happen until after all the frost is out because the trail is extremely soft right now, so there's a lot of time to sort. Sort out how that can happen. Okay, so, yeah, that's a bit of the background, bit of the information.
You first or Councillor Cromwell and Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, just a question and maybe through the chair to administration. What would the cost of that? Three loads of reject gravel be for the county between? Reject and trucking?
Uh, through the chair to Councillor Cromwell, I would have to get back to you with closer specs, um. The, it 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 depends on how much they want, where they want it delivered, where it's coming from, so once you make a decision on this, I can absolutely send out a cost.
But is it fair to, I think in like expanding on the counselor's question, elimination is things. Is the product that we eliminate because it's not valuable for what we're doing? Not quite the garb.
Not the same as three quarter road crashes.
Right, so it's not, this is surplus inventory and I think on a road tour with Councillor Gerlock, I personally see the mountain of it, that doesn't look like it has. A lot of demand.
The cost for the elimination is not the major contending point, it would be the the loading, the trucking and the dropping.
Perfect, okay. Councillor Cromwell, the floor is still.
That was what I was looking for, yeah, the loading, the trucking, the. I wasn't worried about the cost of the elimination gravel, but just a a rough idea of what we'd be looking at at a. In kind. Uh, type number. And it would be, pardon?
Delivered to Collington, I think, the council.
Okay.
If councillor would give me five minutes, I can bring back the cost of trucking, I'm sorry, we've changed the rates recently based on uh, heavy road builders and I don't have them in my head, so my apologies.
Um, just, so council, do we want to have a further discussion or do you want to pause for a moment and uh? Table us till after, do you want to table us till after we deal with calendars? Councillor Cromwell has moved that we table this discussion until after we deal with the calendar section of our agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Doesn't matter, count was six and two and. Motion is adopted. Uh, so let's come back, obviously, we're going to come back to this, eight calendars are on page. One hundred and forty eight. Calendars, um. How did we do it last time? Items to add or let's, we'll alternate, we'll try to keep the pattern. I'll I'll keep you on your toes and I'm going to alternate the pattern. So I'm going to start, the only thing I can think of that I would add to this is there is on the sixteenth of May, a Zoom meeting with the North Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity. Uh, group is meeting with the MLAs from the region to talk generally about some of the the work they've been doing. And that's. That's part of the advocacy and making sure that they uh. The the government becomes more and more aware and the brand building of the the strength of that voice, so that's just a Zoom meeting that I will be attending. And uh. As an aside, I think you all got a little clip from, I think I sent out a clip that someone sent me that hopefully was valuable. Okay, going to go left, right, Councillor Wallack. Councillor, nothing, Councillor Anderson? Nothing, Councillor Chamsik?
Uh, June tenth, FCSS. The fourteenth, Northern Lights. Um, the eighteenth, Boyle Library.
This is all in June, right?
And the twentieth, Town Library.
So all in June, we've got FCSS on the tenth, Northern Lights Library on the fourteenth. Boyle Library and the eighteenth and Town Library and the twentieth.
Correct.
Okay. Councillor Gerlock?
Blue Garden is generally scheduled for the tenth, but I. Got a email that it's in flux right now, so.
Okay.
It's an exact meeting date, but there's one at the beginning of June. The, that's about it for me.
Okay, Councillor Holland.
Thank you, the meeting for the ALTSC MOU uh, for tomorrow has been rescheduled to May third. Uh, Zoom or Teams, I'm not sure.
That's LTS MOU on May third, okay?
Yeah, and uh, we have the tenth is there, yeah, I think that, oh, just a quick question, are we able to um? Do the special meeting on the fifteenth morning Zoom? Instead of the sixteenth?
It's been called for the sixteenth.
Yeah, are we able to reschedule to the fifteenth, being we have lots of time for that?
It's, I suppose it's. I'd want to. I know I called it for a day that actually I knew for sure worked for me.
Okay.
Because because a special meeting is at the call of the chair, I, would you be open to? I mean, is there anybody else that objects to moving it and then if I just want to check a different calendar to make sure that works, because I don't. I mean, I mean, I'm. Personally, I guess indifferent. You're, don't want to move. It's um, are you, you you have a conflict, but it it's just to pass a bylaw of. Are you able to zoom? Zoom in on your phone?
I will try, I I may not be in service, but I will try.
Okay, so you're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we're bouncing back and forth, so now Councillor Cromwell, Councillor, Councillor Holland, do you have? Did I? I got all yours, Councillor Cromwell?
Nothing to add, but I would like to move the MPC meeting from the twenty eighth of May to one PM on the thirtieth of May. Where we might, if we're not done, we could recess the county council meeting. And same with the MPC meeting on the twenty fifth of June. To one PM on the twenty seventh of June.
Have you discussed that with the chair?
Not yet.
Okay. So, um. I mean, I think first the respectful thing is to see what the chair thinks and then to think what council thinks. Moving it to the.
I would have to check Krista.
We. And we, I don't know what's on the agenda for those. I wonder if Director Wilkinson would be willing to.
I mean, they're both, they're both far enough off that.
We can move them again, we've got, can we?
We can deal with this at another meeting.
We could deal with this at the fourteenth, probably.
Yeah.
Councillor. Cromwell? That work for you?
It's in the man in June, it's not time to. Thank, as long as you keep it on the discussion item, I think that's a fine.
And Councillor Gerlock, can we leave it to you to double check that with Director Wilkinson? Hey, Councillor Cromwell, do you have more things? That's it, Councillor Minz?
Uh, May eleventh, uh, got a Summer Village meeting, spring Summer Village meeting out at uh. On the west side, Baptiste Lake Island, like area, uh, myself and Reeve Hall have been invited. And for to have a sit down discussion, which we normally have. Every year, so.
And I. And I think the. Topics of that one and the one for uh, the Summer Village of Mewatha. Was my impression that might come up on later in the agenda when the. Um. Under eleven point one as part of that discussion, CAO and I. The topics for the two meetings with our intermunicipal partners. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So there'll be a chance for us to collectively.
Yeah, yep. You betcha, and then the other one is uh. June eighth. There's a uh. Uh. AGM meeting, Athabasca Watershed Council, um. Hundred percent sure it's Ford McMurray. So, if I be end up trying to. Get to that one. My, my alternate is going to be in Calgary, so. I should probably try to make that one, so. Yeah, it uh, they just opened up their office in in uh, Fort McMurray and, yeah. So they're really trying to. To advance it in there and get get more working, so so yeah, looking forward to actually going to them.
Wasn't that the Athabasca Watershed Council? Didn't they previously have the office in Athabasca?
Yeah, well, now they have, now they have one in Fort McMurray, they got one in Athabasca, the main one in Athabasca.
Not that it left the region, it searched.
Yeah. And uh, they're trying to. Really enhance the the upper, upper basin too. Really enhance the the upper, upper basin too and and that so. So this will help out a great deal. So we got that meeting.
Okay. Any further uh things to add to the agenda? The follow up coming out of it, councillor Gerlick, send a check on MPC with Director Wilkinson. We'll talk about it next time. Um seeking a motion to adopt the calendars amended councillor Cromwell has moved. We adopt the calendars as amended. If any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Now, we had a tabling motion earlier on uh seven point four. We're back to that. That's on page eighty eight. Director Whaley, you were going to find some information shared.
Um the approximate cost, Mr. Chair, for. Loading, hauling and dropping would be uh eleven hundred and forty six dollars.
So. Right in the zone of what we talked about. Uh councillor Holland, you made the motion, so I'm going to leave. Others to chat first. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Anderson?
I'm in favor of supplying three loads. Of elimination to them. I actually think that I would like to amend the motion to say up to maybe ten loads. Because then if. We had a really wet season and they end up needing more later on in the year, and they take three loads this spring, it doesn't have to come back to council for further approval. They can work with administration to get another load or two or whatever they need. Up up to ten seems fairly reasonable to me um being that we're. Uh repairing damage and then trying to maintain the trail. If they're out there. I'd like them to have access to the material that they need.
Okay, so councillor Anderson has moved to amend the motion to read up to ten loads. And we can circle on the amendment specifically, I guess. Councillor Cromwell, your hand went up.
Just a question uh. With how the amendment is. Is there anything that needs to be worded maybe through the chair to the CAO about a a timeline like within? Or it can be open ended and if they need it next spring, no problem?
Okay. So I think councillor Gerlick. What is the definition of a load? Yeah, I I wasn't sure if it was. And um tried a axle trailer or body job or?
Through the chair to councillor Gerlick, uh trucking a pups about twenty five. Uh kitty carrots.
Is that what they were? Twenty five what?
Is that what they were looking for was twenty five? Through the charity council. Was that what they were looking for? It was twenty three loads of twenty five ten?
They weren't sure what um how the if it was to be delivered, it would be a body job or or what it what it was. And I assumed it would be, um I think it's fifteen. Is a ten yard. I assumed it would be ten yard, but I'm. Obviously not correct.
Sorry, through the chair to councillor Holland, um when administration was discussing this request, they figured that the truck and the pup was the best one to get into the area. Um that was just. What they were talking about as for when they provided it before, so.
And you said twenty five yards?
Yes.
Okay, so. Up to two hundred and fifty yards of. Do you want to say ten loads or two hundred and fifty yards? Okay.
Having to use smaller trucks.
Okay.
Depends on the conditions.
So we're good councillor Holland, do you? Want to address a?
I'm elated.
I thought you were holding, but okay um. Councillor Minz, floor is yours.
So instead of if we can go by loads, can we go just by yards? Yards or tons? Two hundred and fifty ton?
Okay.
And then now uh two hundred and fifty ton that uh. By the end of December thirty first, and then it's off the books. And then if they want more next year, then we don't have to keep a running. A running total from year to year of. How much they get if they if they want another? Two hundred and fifty ton on on uh. June and next year, they can just send in the request or. Is is that easier for administration instead of having a? Like this year, we haul them. Thirty ton next year, all of a sudden, so we gotta keep a.
Well, the question also becomes, is there a gift to scale it then if you go to weights or do you just say? We're gonna like, the good deed is you're gonna get ten. Truckloads, however you design that, define that size.
I'm fine, I'm fine with ten truckloads, but I'd like to put an end date of.
Is there any objection to just adding by December thirty first? We'll make that a second amendment, which counts as our two. Okay, so councillor Minz has moved to uh amend. The amend, the amend the motion to include the words by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Anyone want to discuss that? Councillor Anderson, I assume you do, and then we'll go to Cromwell and Gerlick.
Sure. I would speak in opposition to the second amendment for the simple fact that we don't know what the weather is going to be like this year. I'm hoping it rains all summer long. And in that case, some of their maintenance work or repair work might get put off to next year and so. Ten loads. I just think leave it open ended and then if they don't use it this year. They can use it in the future. I doubt that it'll be dragging on for years and years if. Ten if ten loads isn't gonna go that long, so.
Uh councillor Cromwell, floor is yours.
Councillor Anderson said most of what I was actually thinking and I will. Agree with that and vote against the amendment of the amendment. I I think that being able to count to ten is not going to be that overwhelming for. The both the group and administration and. I I'm very confident this will be a positive move for the trail.
Councillor Gerlick. This is something that's pretty simple and straightforward, so I'd kind of like to just keep it simple and straightforward. That will give administration plenty of latitude. If there is a request, they'll be able to fulfill it and they won't have to be coming back to us. And two hundred and fifty tons is a lot. That'll more than satisfy their needs for a long time, for quite a while. Other down on the left want to speak councillor Minz?
Yeah, um. I I hope we get rain. But God help us if we get rain all year. I'm just saying that. And and the other thing, it's 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 not a, it's not an issue to to count ten truckloads and all this other stuff, but. I think we need, I think we need an end date to to some of this stuff, because. All of a sudden, next year, we we only haul three loads this year. Then someone's got to keep track of next year. Well, we had this from. From five years ago, we had a. We had a a request and and we've only hauled. Uh six loads up until. This time. It just, we we gotta keep, we gotta keep. Numbers. And to me, that's 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 completely nuts. Like like end dated, and then if they want more gravel or want more elimination next year, they write us a nice. Nice letter, say, hey, can we get? Ten more loads of elimination. Hey, yeah. You know, I just, I I to keep these numbers. It's 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 accruing the numbers from year to year to year. It's like, I don't know.
Councillor Holland's on deck, but I'm going to open the floor to administration first to see what advice they have. If there's some middle ground or some good thing they can talk.
Um, Miss Chairman, actually, it's just a question. Um. I assume that this. Project, which have no objection to, is going to be funded from the donations budget and not from the infrastructure department budget, because. It's a donation, so we have to tick that off of the amount that, so we'll have to calculate that and. In the final budget, show you which, how much of the donations budget you've already spent. That's all.
Councillor Holland, you're on deck.
Thank you. Um. Just in 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 chatting, uh of course, with the uh recreational uh Trail Association, uh I'm fairly confident that uh. Ten loads would be easily, weather permitting, and that's that's the only thing that would would halt it, halt it, but that those ten loads would be. Sufficient to make sure that that whole trail in that section, I think there's eight kilometers there, would be well. Looked after, well maintained, that we wouldn't have to look again at it for a long time. So um. I'm not so much in favor of ending it on December thirty first, because again, weather permitting, um we could end up going into next spring, but. I would say December thirty first of twenty twenty.
Spies, sure, but these few uh I am pretty confident that these loads will, if weather permitting, will happen this this uh this summer.
Councillor Holland, would you address just the world on the same understanding? Is it fair to assume there's a staging area where this can just? The trails has that it can be.
Yes, there's been conversation, of course, about that as well. And the staging area basically would be at the trailhead. Um backed in just a little bit in there, so it's not impacting any of the residents in the area at all. The skid steer would be on site the day they would arrange to be there at the same time, so that everything is dealt with all. Pardon me, everything's dealt with all at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I it's some ways almost a little bit like deja vu. I like councillor Gerlick's comments about the, you know, keeping things simple, but. You know, so in terms of the original motion, certainly, I think where would we be without, you know, all the work that community groups do across the region and it's certainly appropriate that we. Help the volunteers and enable them and and uh. Cause we we get good leveraging of resources when we provide a little bit of something and then they carry on and do a whole bunch of extra. Kind of leverage that up and extra work and it helps them thrive. So I I think it's uh. I personally support it. I think it's good for our region and it's a good a good uh culture and pattern for us to to undertake. Um I like the idea, because I. Impression is that the elimination is really worth not a lot to us in terms of our own internal needs. And the trucking is, trucking has obviously has a cost and a value, but it's. It's again something, it's a resource we can provide to enable that community group, so I I have no objection to the amendment up to ten loads. I do kind of like the idea that there's some deadline and maybe if it's. Regardless of how wet the year is, at some point, they should be able to haul somewhere. We should be able to get in ten loads. And if we need to make an extension. We can, but I also don't like the idea of stretching this into. Into the future because it has the potential to impact future budgets. And you know, in a in an estate planning term, you'd call it ruling from the grave. I I don't. Think this is the kind of thing we want to commit. Uh future donations budgets to, so we we deal with it in one cycle and uh. And then the twenty twenty six donations budget isn't being impacted by a decision we made back in April of twenty twenty four. So I. I I think I'll share that I'm in favor of all three. Now, that's me. Is there anybody that hasn't uh? Turn the microphone on that wants to? Is there any further discussion needed on any of this, or can I start calling questions? Are you waving at him or me?
I don't know yet.
You gotta crave to me to speak.
I I'm. I was looking at my computer that just happened to say Rob Minz. Um so is that amendment that councillor Minz put in for December thirty one of two thousand twenty four or twenty five?
He said December thirty one, twenty twenty four. Twenty four, okay, so the the um. There's an amendment on the table. To amend the main motion to add the words by December thirty one, twenty twenty four. So this is an attachment to the main motion, not to the amendment. Is everyone clear on the question? If so, on the question of the adoption of the amendment to add by December thirty one, twenty twenty four to the main motion, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is five and three and the amendment is adopted. On the question of the amendment to amend the motion to read up to ten loads. Is there any further discussion? On the question of the adoption of the amendment to add the words up to ten loads, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the amendment is adopted. On the question of the main motion, which would now read. Uh to deliver ten loads of elimination to be dropped off in an agreeable location by December thirty one, twenty twenty four. All those in favor? Opposed? The count is eight and zero. Sorry, I thought you were voting director Whaley. And the motion is adopted. Okay, seven point five uh is. Would typically follow the presentation. I think it'd be hard to have that discussion first, so we'll. Move on to item number eleven point one G. What I'm will propose to you as we address uh sorry, part number ten. And then we enter closed session. And then uh to deal with eleven point one, and in that time, we'll take a quick break before we start. Eleven point, sorry, ten point one G councillor Holland, you added this to the agenda.
Um this is just, I actually quick up, I don't have the minutes yet from the last meeting, um and we'll we'll put those in, but we did get some good news. Um and I don't know if this went out to all of council, but um Trans Canada Trail has approved twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the grant that was. Uh put in, which will go towards the the cleanup in um Collington. Manook. Perry Vale and and uh Rochester, and so that will take place in June. And thank you, administration, very much for. Putting through that uh that grant request and and I'm so happy that we received it. Um. It also twelve hundred and fifty dollar grant was received, the uh Athabasca Recreational Trails Association put in for the Peace River Trail. So the trails are really going to have another good year, and I really appreciate that in our preparation for the hundred and fifty year celebration. So thank you all very, very much.
Uh councillor Anderson, ten point one said.
Thank you. The Regional Emergency Advisory Committee met on Tuesday of this week. And one of, I guess, the main focus of our meeting was the after action report. Um for the Jackfish Lake Fire. That was shared with all members of council. It'll be an email yesterday. Uh but I just wanted to. Say kudos to administration for the presentation of that report. And I'm looking forward to seeing the after uh the action item list and priorities and their plan for. Implementing of recommendations at our next committee meeting. Hopefully in three or four weeks.
It's my understanding uh from the administrative team at that meeting that there are a number of the. Outcomes and the lessons and the learnings that are already implemented. There's no waiting around the the regional chief and the CEO Beck's team have been. Um moving forward. Rapidly on on the things that are important to deal with and have a plan for the rest. Uh would be appropriate to entertain a motion to receive the reports for information. Councillor Minz has moved to receive the reports for information. Is no further discussion on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Um so. We will uh go into. Actually, we've only got fifteen. We've only got fifteen minutes until the uh until the ten thirty delegation, so we can enter a closed session um. CEO Beck regarding eleven point one, my impression was that would be a discussion worthy of more than fifteen minutes if we include a break for. Someone to have uh. Check the fresh air quality outside and refill the coffee.
We can certainly have a break, but there's a couple of items that probably don't even, won't even take that long, wouldn't take that long. Just an update.
So uh it would be appropriate to take a motion into closed session. Councillor Cromwell has moved on the question of the adoption of the motion to go into closed session, all those in favor? At the opposed. Eight and zero and the motion is adopted. I mean, our our tradition here is we quickly introduce everybody at the table, just to make sure, you know, if you can't read all the name tags, which of course I I can't from this distance, but. Um. So you have, uh you know, Adele Entas, the acting corporate services director, I think. And CAO and Ms. Blair, Mr. Schenkelberg, and then councillor Minz.
Welcome. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. I think we've all met before. Tracy Holland, councillor, councillor Division five, Kelly Jameson, nicely.
You know, welcome to Division nine.
We Brian Hall, Division four.
Ashton Anderson, I reside in Division three.
True, real like Division one. Gary Crumbs in Division two, welcome.
And councillor Kapitanic uh who is Division two is. Uh unable to join us today. So the floor is yours.
All right, it's awesome. Well, thanks for having me here today. Um. Don't know if my presentation's up or how you want to do this, but.
Yeah.
Okay. No, no, it's all right. You ever come over there? You ever come over there?
Uh, oh.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Well, thanks for uh having me here this afternoon to discuss the our financial results and the financial statements for Athabasca County for December thirty one, twenty twenty three. Uh, so usually to begin these presentations, I like to do a bit of an overview of an audit. So why we have an audit and the importance of it, and really it's to enhance. The degree of confidence of the intended users of those financial statements. So the main users being yourselves as counselors. Uh, rate payers, the province of Alberta municipal affairs. So those organizations or individuals with a vested interest in the financial performance of the county. Uh, this is achieved by us as auditors expressing an opinion. Uh, so do that. We give assurance that the numbers are free from a material misstatement. So what that means is that as auditors, we're seeking reasonable assurance. So it's a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute. So we're not auditing every transaction that happened during the year. As others, we also exercise professional skepticism. Or sorry, we exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism. So. Uh, we're staying alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatements. So areas such as cutoff, we want to make sure that transactions have been recorded in the correct fiscal period. Looking at your revenue recognition as the high risk area, you want to make sure revenue is being recognized when services or any performance obligations have been met. And then collectibility of accounts receivables. So are your receivables at your end deemed to be collectible? Or should there be an allowance associated with any of those? And then a critical assessment of the audit evidence we're looking at. So has anything been altered? Did we obtain information from a third party or directly from uh from the county management? Uh, so when it comes to our audit report, uh, so on there, page three and four, the financial statements, we give our independent or opinion here at the top. Uh, which outlines that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. So those are the accounting standards that all government organization report under across Canada. Uh, when it comes to the basis for opinion. We indicate here that we conducted our audit in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. So auditing standards too are the same across Canada. Uh, but they're reflective of of all organizations, whether you're a publicly traded company or a not-for-profit or a local government, auditing standards are always the same. It's the reporting framework with the opinion that can be different. Now, when it comes to responsibility and management, those charge our governance for the preparation, fair presentation of the financial statement. And in the last part of the auditor's report, we outline our responsibilities, which in turn summarizes our objective, which is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements. Uh, so with that said, I'll go over some financial highlights uh for the year for the county here. So you'll see a snapshot here of your. Statement of financial position. You'll see your cash and temporary investments were up about eight and a half million, up to thirty five point six from twenty seven the prior year. So you had generated. A fourteen million dollars in your operating activities and spent about five point eight million on tangible capital assets. So that resulted in a change in your cash. And when it comes to taxes and grants in place of taxes. So that year end, you had six hundred and six thousand here, so six hundred and ninety one thousand in relation to current taxes and as well as one point. Three, seven, seven in relation to to taxes that are in arrears. And there's allowance associated with those totally one point four, six million there. Uh, when it comes to trade and other receivables, uh provincial and federal grant receivables up to eight point eight million. So that includes M S I capital of five point eight. Uh, Canada Community Building Fund of nine sixty four, uh disaster recovery funding and as well as uh S T I P funding of one point five million. So grants that have been. Uh, you've incurred the expenses in the year or the tangible capital asset cost, but yet to collect the funding associated with those projects. When it comes to trade and other receivables, that was up slightly to eight hundred thousand. And then receivables from other government, which contains a G S T as well as uh other local government uh receivables there. Uh, so in turn, total receivables up to ten million uh versus three point three or six point seven million dollar increase there. Uh, back to the statement of financial position, land held for resale of one hundred and thirty two thousand and then the total of all those leave you with a financial asset position of forty six point three million or a fifteen million dollar increase from prior years, thirty one million. Uh, when it comes to accounts payable and accrued liabilities, so what the county still owed subsequent to your end. About four point nine million in 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 accounts payable. About four point three million of general trade and then six hundred thousand owed to other governments. When it comes to deferred revenue, so these are grand pro grants that you've collected in the year, but um. Have yet to apply to a to a project. So you got three point two million for future periods. You'll see your M S I funding there, uh additions that contains twenty twenty one, twenty two and twenty twenty three. Uh, County Community Building Fund, same thing, contains three years there. And then your revenue recognition. So what was recognized with those funds? Um. You had recognized revenue for M S I as you had purchased four graders in the year. Making up the bulk of that and as well as your Alberta transportation funding for various bridge file work in the year for two point seven million. Uh, back to the statement of financial position, uh you'll see your employee benefit obligations here up to seven hundred thousand in relation to vacation and sick accrual. Uh, payments there. And then the new item for the year is asset retirement obligation. So the county adopted public. Sector thirty two eighty in the year. In relation to reporting your asset retirement obligation. So that contains lagoons, buildings, uh fuel tanks, so items located in the county that have an additional environmental. Yep.
So that's really a movement though from other, because we actually. Included that in the financial statements last year, right? Under a different heading. Is that fair?
Uh, well, previously you would have had a liability, I think, for your gravel gravel pits there as well, which are included in this, but.
Okay.
But uh it's what it was under a different section of the handbook. So this section's new, which is why you're seeing all the municipalities adopt this year, but that amount. From last year does wrap up into the asset retirement obligations now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, but yeah, and then they're calculated a bit differently, but anyhow, so those are included in there as well. So um. The county used a present value technique to indicate the value as of today to be seven point eight million. Uh, there's future undiscounted cash flows of that of ten point four. So what we do is we we take the cost. We we future value it out for when it's expected to settle, which is between the years twenty twenty four and twenty forty five currently based on estimates. And then we present value them back using a discount rate or a lending rate. To give you today's cost. So if you were to retire all these today, that would be your cost, but because you're not, as it goes into the future. There's an additional expense every year that gets added to your operations as that liability increases. And that's called your accretion expense is what you'll see in your operations. It kind of works the opposite of your amortization expense for T C A or well, actually the opposite, the same way. As it's a non-cash item that goes to your operations and it just. Uh, again, this one will increase the liability. So in the future, when you look to retire these assets. Um. Uh, at that point, if you do retire them, the costs associated with that will go to reduce the liability. Versus going against your bottom line on your statement of operation. So. And again, these these liabilities of retirements, it's not that they didn't exist before they did. They just weren't reflected on your financial statement. So. In the future, again, when you go to retire, uh building with asbestos or a potential a glue lagoon or a gravel pit. The costs are there, right? So now they're just reflected on your statement. Yeah.
Yeah, question here.
Thank you. So if what we're talking about is these liabilities appreciating through the years. The contaminated sites under liabilities up there seem to stay the same for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Can we expect that to appreciate for the twenty twenty four statement?
Yeah, the the contaminated site is actually a nuisance ground near El Scott or whatever, but um that should be adjusted for inflation every year. Uh, because the amount is not. Significant to the town of the county's financial statement. It wasn't. Adjusted and we didn't make a recommendation to adjust it either because the amount increased was.
But theoretically.
But theoretically, yeah, it should it should increase slightly every year just due to inflation is right now how that contaminated site would go up.
Thank you.
Okay, and then um, yeah, and then so that's the. Ask for time and obligation contaminated sites. Uh, your debt limits, um obviously you you have no debt uh currently, but your debt limits are calculated at one point five times your total operating revenue. So. You have fifty five million there available. And then your debt servicing limit is point two five times your operating revenue, which is how much servicing on the debts of interest and principal you can repay every year and that's at nine million. Uh, so if you're to take your total financial assets less your liabilities of nineteen point five, you end up with a net financial asset position of twenty six point eight million or eleven and a half million dollar increase year over year. Uh, so that would mean that you have sufficient financial assets to meet all your current liabilities that you do have. Uh, when it comes to non-financial assets, your tangible capital assets of eighty two point eight. Sorry, the slide has needs some changes, but your opening balance should be eighty two million, not two thirty six. Uh, shown there. Uh, your additions in the year were six point nine million. So under engineered structures, you have various bridge file work as well as bridge culvert in there. Machinery equipment in relation to the four graders as well as the one excavator that was purchased in the year. And then you also see the disposals in your machinery and equipment as you. Um, dispose of your previous graders and excavator that were uh that were being used. When it comes to amortization expense, it should be five point five million and that represents the usage of your assets in the year. So during the year. You would um or sorry, as you purchase assets, they last five years, ten years, twenty years. You take a percentage of that, it goes into operations. Uh, so again, your expenses here is five point seven. You added about seven million in addition. So you're seeing an increase to your assets or a replacement of those assets in the year. Uh, when it comes to the statement of financial position, again, non-financial assets, inventory for consumption, so gravel inventory there, one point six million. And as well as equipment parts and chemicals there of seven hundred and fifty thousand make up the difference. So that left you a total non-financial assets of eighty five point seven. So if you would take that number and add in your net financial asset position, you'd end up with an accumulated surplus. Of a hundred and twelve million. Uh, year over year change there of eleven point one, which is actually your annual surplus for the year. So your accumulated surplus of one twelve is made up of two parts. Your unrestricted and restricted surplus make up thirty seven and a half million. And then your tangible capital asset component make up seventy five. So of that number, thirty seven and a half is related to a cash component. And the other part is related to your is tied up in your assets. So with an eleven point one million dollar change year over year. You actually see that change in your unrestricted and restricted surplus amount as your T C A decreased about seventy four thousand. So the. So the entirety of your annual surplus this year is actually an increase to your unrestricted and restricted. Not in relation to a change in your capital. Sometimes you'll see. Your annual surplus will be a larger amount, but it could be because of a bunch of capital grants either being recognized, but in this case it's in relation to your operations. Uh, so the next slide here, uh, start on your statement of operations. So this shows your operating revenue for the year. You'll see your net municipal taxes were up to twenty eight point four million from twenty two point four, about twenty six percent change. Uh, so thirteen percent in non-residential rate, two percent for residential rate and as well as the remaining being an increase in your assessment value. Now, when it comes to gra government transfer operating, that was up to up to two point six from one point six as you had it. Additional disaster recovery funding there of six hundred thousand. As well as your A C P grant, Alberta Community Partnership there of three hundred and seventy two. Now, when it comes to user fees and sales of goods, that was up as well. You saw additional water and sewer revenue as well as recreation revenue associated with the consolidation of the multiplex. And then investment income up to one point seven from seven twenty six. So it was interest rates have risen for. Uh, this year, the you're also seeing a greater rate of return on your cash and temporary investments that you do have.
Jeff, do you uh sorry, would you please be back up? You made the comment about user fees and sales of goods along with consolidation of multiplex. So.
Yeah.
The county owns the building, but we don't. Like the revenue from the from the other society's operation is not our revenue.
Yeah, there's revenue and expense component that comes across as you own. I think you own fifty percent of the. Of the operations there or fund them.
Right to blend that into our statements here.
Yeah, so that comes in. So we got a we were able to obtain a draft statement before that that. We allow us to adjust our amounts and the statements to to get a more accurate reflection of of that. But yeah, the operations do come in.
Thank you.
They do net out though, because you either fund the deficit or you don't, but they're shown on a gross basis across there. And I think they're reflected in note uh. Note uh. Note nineteen on the financial statements there. Is where you would see uh amounts there coming through, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hmm.
Um. There you also saw some additional other revenue in the year. You have some insurance claim and also donations you were collecting from the multiplex pool there. So that comes through on a gross basis as well. And that left you a total revenues of the year of thirty six point six million or eight point million dollar increase from prior year. And as well as uh over budget there by about three million. So. Increase uh in the operating revenues. Uh, this pie chart here just gives you a percentage breakdown of of where your funds uh come from there. So really net municipal property taxes make up seventy seven percent. Last year was eighty two, so it is down as as a whole of the pie. Uh, government transfer operating at seven, it was six last year and then investment income was up this year up to five from three in the prior year. Uh, expenses by function here. So what the what the operating revenue was spent on. Uh, transportation services were up to sixteen point two from fourteen point seven. You saw additional road maintenance, equipment usage and engineering costs in there. Uh, general admin services, you had an increase in wages as well as I T costs year over year there. Uh, protective services, that includes your disaster recovery funding. So you have the additional revenue that came in and then the costs were associated into that category there. And then planning and development had additional wages and F T E there up to one point six and one point three. That left you again with total expense of thirty one point two or a two point eight million dollar increase. Year over year. So when it comes to comparing to the budget here, you'll see this this chart here, the line represents your budget. And then the bar graph, the dark blue represents your current year. So you'll see your budget is either at or just above uh all the categories there. Uh, the only difference is in relation to the recreation costs, which I think would affects the multiplex consolidation there, but everything else is at or below the budget amounts. Uh, when it comes to expenses by object, uh so a different look at the expenses here, your salaries, wages and benefits up to ten point four from nine point three. So additional uh F T E and filling of positions there. Contract and general services were up in relation to engineer and consulting costs. And then uh. And as well as additional police funding there. Amortization of five point five materials, goods and services of four point four million. And again, thirty one point two in total expenses. So if you take your total operating revenue less your operating expenses, you end up with an annual surplus there. Of five point four million. Uh, the government transfers for capital here, uh five point six includes M S I stip funding and Canada Community Building Fund. So total other income plus operating surplus equals eleven point one million for an annual surplus of the division. You see there's a restatement here for one point two million uh in relation to your asset retirement obligation amount uh that got restated. So we used the modified retroactive restatement approach, which was what was. Also provided as guidance to municipal affairs. So what that means is as of January one. Twenty twenty two, your initial liability was booked and the offset went to your accumulated surplus as a reduction. And then in twenty twenty two, you have an accretion expense and as well as in twenty twenty three, an accretion expense, which shows an increase in that. Asset retirement obligation from the opening amount. The other method would have been to do a perspective method where you would have had a direct expense on your operations. Versus adjusting against accumulated surplus. So. The modified retroactive restatement approach is is was pretty common and 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 used, so it doesn't uh doesn't doesn't fit. In in essence, it doesn't really change what your operations were for the year, just the accretion expense uh from the change as opposed to a direct impact, so. Uh, so in summary, uh, the county ended with the annual surplus of eleven point one million versus one point eight million the prior year. Net financial asset position at the twenty six point eight. So you have sufficient financial assets to meet your obligations. Uh, there's also uh an audit finance report. We'll talk about the restatement for A R O as well as a disaster disaster recovery program grant receivable that was booked uh from twenty twenty. Uh, but we had no significant uh control deficiencies or unusual county policies. Um, we have some unreported misstatements in our report as well and uh no significant difficulties to note to counsel. Uh, just wanted to thank uh the team for for all their help. If anybody has any questions on this, before I jump into the other report, I can definitely take them.
Counselor Holland, sorry.
Thank you. Uncorrected misstatements. Can I get a bit of a definition on that one, please? Just because I'm just I'm looking at it going, what does that mean?
Oh, yeah. So so we're performing our our audit work. Sometimes we'll identify items that we feel. Um. That the I guess the the correct amount isn't reported, so it should be different. So that could be potentially additional accrual or. Or some other change to the statements, but those amounts. Are not necessarily significant in nature to the county's overall position. So they either elected to not be reported within the financial statements, then they just get presented on our unreported misstatement schedule. So they're just there. Those are adjustments that are not reflected in your statement versus adjustments that are reflected, so. And some sometimes majority of them have to do with timing. Sometimes where something happens in this year that maybe should have been a prior year, but it's not of again, material nature. So we're just. Not restating for that amount, but yeah.
And and other uh meetings we've I've been present with you. Jeff has explained the threshold, the calculate like some things are so minor, they don't.
Yeah. So it all kind of depends. Sometimes, yeah, sometimes man who doesn't want to make those entries or whatever, but yeah. Yep.
Other questions? Uh, you you're gonna go on to the financial statement. So what you still you have another report?
Well, I have the audit fines report. I don't know if I I can't remember if I do that one in camera here or if I do that.
That's one uh.
With the pen on the thought, yeah.
Because of the questions unless the C I O has different advice. No, on on this one, the questions that I think come from open for me, if uh. We talked about the trade and other receivables. Uh, there's a fairly significant change year over year.
Mm hmm.
Is that because of a slowing down like or they is the aging increasing or is it?
The the trade receivable now for the grants?
Like, are there any concerns about the receivables aging?
Uh, well, um, yeah, you you're gonna want to apply for your grants so you can collect the money. So the the expected work that you want to do on those programs has been done. You just need to finish your application or. To the province to get the money for those programs.
And then as it relates to the trade and other, like I that's our accounts payable and accounts receivable, those it looks like have increased as well. Is that again related to just more volume or is it? Are they is is the aging getting worse?
Uh, well, the receivables is just mainly in relation to the grant funding through the province of Alberta that you're gonna want to apply for. And then the accounts payable. Items, uh, they were in relation to just more, yeah, more volume, more work at your end. So about four point three million versus three point eight in the trade side. And then you had more money owing to other governments in relation to uh liabilities that you're in.
That's right.
Have a question regarding schedule three of the audited financial statement. Under requisitions.
Do you want to give just a page number for the?
Oh, sorry. So this is page ten of the financial statement and page one oh two of our agenda package.
One of one of the agenda package.
Um, under requisitions, the Greater North Foundation, the seniors lodging. It says that our budgeted value for twenty twenty three was only eighty two thousand, and yet the actual was two eighty seven, which actually is more in line with. The twenty twenty two value. And then the designated industrial property is like budgeted at two sixty seven five.
Yeah.
And the actual was ninety five.
Yeah, it does look like those should probably be flipped. I could we could take we could take a look at that and make sure.
Statement or?
It could be, yeah.
Was it something in our budgeting process that you picked up?
Um, well, these are I I would I've I've topped my head, I wouldn't know, but I would usually we are pulling the accounts. Based on that the budget is tied to, but we can take a look and and see from the actual approved budget if maybe maybe the amount was in the wrong account and. Should have been the other one, but.
Requisition wouldn't be in the approved budget, but I can confirm the Greater North requisition would have been in the more. I think those.
Yeah, yeah, I just I think they need to be flipped, but yeah, usually they're they're coming. It's some so when we get a G L account, it's got an actual amount in a budget amount. And it could have just been that the amount needs to be in the different ones. Yeah, for sure. But thanks for knowing that. We'll definitely make that change before we issue the final ones.
So in the first half of the presentation, there's on, this is again seven, page seventeen of the council agenda. The employee benefit obligation to seven thirteen. What changed to go from four hundred and forty eight dollars last year to seven thirteen? Can you just?
Your vacation accrual did.
So we weren't doing it last year or like?
It just wasn't paid out. So people were working and accruing more vacation.
So in the over the span of one year, we've had a three hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, it'll be in the other report too. We can talk in more detail there, but yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone further questions on this first half of the report? Looks like none, so we're gonna um. We're gonna move to the second report that's farther on in the agenda. You will bear with everybody for catching up in their pay package. So this is the one, uh, this is immediately after the financial statements and starts here on page one twenty of the agenda. One two, one two zero or one twenty, yeah, one twenty. So this is the one, the C I O Beck, I think, in order to do some of the questions and the. Is this something we should be presenting enclosed for the conversation and the questions or is it?
Um, this is part of it.
It's in the open part of the agenda. I think some of the questions and the discussion should happen. Okay, so we'll. So we'll do the open session first, guy, folks, and then if the questions are really specific, we can. There'll be a closed session after too. Again, thank you, Jeff, for yours.
Yeah, no problem. Are you? Do you want me just to read or do you want to put it up or? Yeah, yeah, no, I'm. Well, does this work or? Oh, yeah, okay. Awesome. Okay, so this is our audit uh findings report, so kind of the qualitative part of our. Of a section here. So really, the purpose of this report is to promote two-way communication between ourselves as the auditors and yourselves as as counselors. So effectively, as of today's date, we'll complete our subsequent event procedures. We'll obtain a signed management representation letter. We'll complete required communication to council, which is what we're doing right now. And then we'll obtain evidence of council's approval of the financial statement. Once those are all done, we'll be able to issue signed audited financial statements. Uh, when it comes to changes from our audit plan, the only change is in relation to our materiality. So we initially set our materiality. Based on prior year actuals, and then as we begin our audit, we adjust to the current year amounts that we had. Uh, so in turn there, we use four percent of operating expenses or roughly a million dollars. As a materiality level for the county. So what we're saying here is that if your revenues or expenses were to increase or decrease by a million dollars. We feel that a user of the financial statement may have a different view or outlook on the financial performance of the county. So again, users being yourselves as counselors. Uh, municipal affairs, those organizations with a vested interest there. Uh, when it comes to our engagement team, so myself and and Achiya, I'm responsible for the for the work that our our firm provided the to the county here. Uh, when it comes to audit results, uh, so here I'll just touch on a few of the items here. Uh, first one here, management override of control. So management is in a unique position to potentially perpetrate or manip- or, you know, manipulate the financial statements through adjusting journal entries. Whether through fraud or error. So we use data analytic tools that identify specific journal entries within the the G L. We then test those journal entries uh to ensure that they are valid business entries. So again, looking for certain items that may be indicative of possible misstatements. So we had no significant findings in that area. Uh, when it comes to revenue recognition, uh, such as the grant funding, we want to make sure revenue is being recognized once performance obligations have been met there. Uh, so we have noticed some findings there that we've noted in our other matters section of our report. Uh, other areas of note here, so operating expenses, uh, here, we want to make sure the expenses have been recorded in the correct period and that they are actual valid county expenses. So we've noticed some other matters there, and as well as salaries, wages and benefits, including uh your employee benefit obligation. We've identified some. Items or findings there in our other matters section as well. Uh, when it comes to receivable balances here, so we did have a restatement in the year where it came to the disaster recovery funding as the county. Uh, was incurring costs related to that, and then the application uh was kind of being done in the current year, although it. It's so although the receivable should have been booked back in the twenty twenty fiscal period. Uh, when it comes to tangible capital assets, uh, so this kind of is a big, obviously a big section of your statement of financial position. So here we our risk is that you have items that are in capital that don't actually meet the definition of that. You have items that have been expense that should be in capital. Or you have assets that are potentially impaired that should be written down. So. Here we're looking at your tangible capital asset policy. Uh, we're testing a significant additions and disposals. Uh, we're looking to recalculate your amortization and gain loss schedule, and as well as we want to look at how you're funding these these assets. So you fund them through tax revenue reserves and or or grants, what's approved in your budget, and we want to make sure that that's in line with what's uh what's been approved there. So we do have a restatement in the year, just in relation to the asset retirement obligation uh additions there for tangible capital assets. And then the last one here really is your asset retirement obligation. So obviously a new new section for the year. Uh, really completeness of this is uh is a big risk. So do we have all the asset retirement obligations of the county? Uh, what kind of work was was done? So assessing the controls uh over the over the work, the the scoping of the work that the county did. Where the estimates came from, are they valid third-party estimates? And then and then also adjusting the calculations to make sure those are accurate. So uh, we didn't have any findings there. We're just noting that uh, obviously the restatement for the year. But uh, we feel that your asset retirement obligation amount is uh is is good there. Uh, so when it comes to adjustments in the year, so we made thirty one adjusting entries uh from when we began our work versus six in the prior year. It resulted in an increase of your assets of two point eight million, decrease the liabilities of two point four, decrease your accumulated surplus of one point two. And then an increase your annual surplus of eight hundred and four thousand. In addition to that, uh, there were management entries that were made, uh, once we began our work, about sixteen of those. Uh, after the initial trial balance was begun. So a lot of entries were being made after we had uh began uh began our audit. Uh, when it comes to unrecorded misstatements, so here we noted an understatement of about sixty five thousand, a few items here. So accruals for year end related to payroll liability for employees paid between December twenty first and twenty third. So it exactly increasing your uh your liability there. Uh, rec- record correction or record correction of fiscal year twenty twenty two over under levy. Uh, also record the net asset pickup of the multiplex consolidation. So in prior years, we haven't had exactly information readily available. So this year, the statements were a lot more complete, so we were able to pick up all the components of this year. And as well as there was additional amounts that wouldn't have been in the prior year statement that were recognized this year in relation to one hundred eighty seven thousand. And then also carry forward of the free grant here. So in in fact, the net effect on the bottom line is that the county surplus is understated. Should say sixty five oh five seven, not sixty seven there, but in relation to the uh. Uh, to the financial statement. So with materiality at a million, we don't feel that these adjustments are gonna change anyone's opinion of the financial performance of the county. If they were recorded or not. Uh, when it comes to your restatement, so there's two here. So the restatement for the disaster recovery program. In relation to the to the additional receivable for funding there, and as well as your asset retirement obligations, the main one being. At the bottom here, your decrease on opening accumulated surplus of four point one million, and then the increase. Or sorry, the decrease in your gravel reclamation of seven point seven, which was there previously, and then, oh, yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry. They inflict that, yeah. And then the uh increase of your asset retirement obligation of seven point four million there. Uh, when it comes to your control environment, um, and other observations, so we have not identified any significant controlled deficiencies. Uh, when it comes to significant qualitative aspects or accounting policies, again, the adoption of asset retirement obligations effectively for January one twenty twenty three. So the county had applied the modified retroactive restatement approach, and this is also reflected in note twenty four of the financial statements. Uh, there were no other initial sections or changes of significant accounting policies in relation to this one. Uh, when it comes to significant uh your accounting estimates, we feel your estimates are in line. So your allowance, um. Useful life of T C A, your accretion on your A R O. So we feel that your estimates are are good. And then we'll also issue a management letter uh to management in relation to non-significant items that we had noted while performing our work. Uh, so when it comes to other matters, uh, so in relation to revenue recognition, so we had noted that no revenue in relation to M S I. Canada Community Building Fund grants, uh, they were expensed in the year, so this resulted in understatement of the county surplus. So additionally, projects record reporting for M S I and C C B F have been delayed during the. Resulting in the county not being able to receive its annual allocation of funds since twenty twenty one. Uh, so. Uh, it has been issued by the government of Alberta. M S I will be replaced in the year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Any capital funding not spent within five years after the funding was allocated must be returned to the province. So delays in project reporting could result in the county losing its M S I capital allocation, or the county could potentially be obligated to pay back significant amounts. So we're recommending that you possibly get that caught up. And uh, and to get your funds. This is what the receivable is for. Uh, when it comes to accrued receivables and accrued liabilities here, so we noted no adjustments were made in twenty twenty three for accrued receivables or accrued liabilities outside reversal of prior year. So uh, again, uh, this could result in understatement of revenues and expenses and misstatements here. So we're asking that accruals be be booked. Uh, when it comes to your reserves, we noted no adjustments there in relation to your twenty twenty three transfer budget reserves. Um, so again, this was adjusted for within the financial statements, and then your employee benefit obligation in relation to. Uh, your vacation accrual, as you see a larger increase year over year. So based on your policy, you're not supposed to have employees over two years of holidays. We had tested the larger ones and noted that you have a number of employees or a few employees that do exceed that amount. Uh, that resulted in a fifty nine percent increase in employee benefit obligation year over year. So those are our other matters. Uh, when it comes to appendices, so just our required communication here on appendix one, we do not hold a financial interest. Uh, position, business or personal or business relationship or economic dependence on the county to maintain our independence there. Uh, we have our um management representation letter that we'll get a signed copy of, and then we'll be able to issue signed audit financial statements. And then our last part here is appendix three, where we discuss new and revised accounting standards. So there are three new accounting standards for next year, public sector thirty four hundred revenue. We'll have some additional disclosure requirements. Uh, for the county's financial statement. And then four years from now, December thirty one, twenty twenty seven, you will see a change in your financial statement presentation. So what will happen is you currently have financial assets. Your non-financial assets will move from the bottom of your financial statement up to the top. So you'll have financial assets, then you'll have non-financial assets, and you'll have total assets. You'll then have financial liabilities. Non-financial liabilities and then net assets. Those two are the liabilities plus net assets will then total up and agree to your current asset position. So you'll see a traditional balance sheet approach on your financial statements. You will then see a statement of of financial asset position. That'll take your financial assets less your financial liabilities. You'll have a statement of operations as you currently do, and then you'll have a net asset schedule. Which will break out your accumulated surplus between your between your unrestricted, restricted and equity and T C A, and as well as a remeasurement gain and loss schedule. Uh, which currently doesn't affect you is you don't have any uh investments uh that are tied up to any that have any fair value component or liabilities that is do as well. But if you ever did, you would see an adjustment for that. So those are the changes coming down four years from now in relation to your financial statement presentation, which will change again. This will be the second change for me since I've been doing these, but yeah. So and that's uh that's it for our audit findings report. I guess if anybody has any questions, I can definitely take those.
Colleagues, questions? I have a couple, but I think I want to reserve those for post-session. If there are no questions from council on the presentation so far, it would be appropriate, maybe Caster Gerlick will move that we're going to close session. Caster Gerlick has moved a motion to go into closed session on on the adoption of the motion, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. Again, that without management present. Can you unmute it? Are we unmuted? All right, we left closed session at two twenty eight on a motion from Council Gerlick. The count was eight and zero. Um, it is, uh, we are at, we finished four point three in the agenda. Data was left for discussion or number seven point five. Counselor Anderson, you're gonna make a motion to, or it would make sense to have a motion to accept the financial statement. Is it to adopt? Approve. Um, with the exception of that one correction i- around the Greater North.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have the budget there. Yeah, yeah, we've changed those on the final for sure.
So to approve the amended. That's right, if we move that the council approve the twenty twenty three financial statements as amended, is there any further discussion? Seeing none in the question, the adoption of the motion, all those in favor. Opposed, count is eight and zero, and that motion is adopted. There's one further motion that's not quite on your agenda, but Counselor Anderson is gonna make a motion to. Accept the improved consulting presentation. For information. Counselor Anderson has moved, we accept the presentation from improved consulting for information. I missed that one, the agenda was set up. Is there any further discussion? Except, receive. What do you like there? You care to receive? To to receive the presentation from improved consulting for information on the question of the adoption of the motion to. Accept, to receive, to receive the presentation from improved consulting for information, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero, and a motion is adopted. C I O, pardon me? Eight and zero, eight and zero. C I O Beck, um, was there anything remaining under eleven point one that we didn't cover that's imperative you covered with us today?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman.
So eleven point one um was just information without requiring any actions. Is there someone willing to move that we receive that for information? Counselor Cromwell has moved, we received the C I O's presentation for information. And the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. There is no further business on our agenda. Therefore, the meeting is adjourned at two thirty three P M. Mister Allison, thank you for joining us today.